In various iterations of this plan, the primary entrance to the project has moved to where it makes sense engineering-wise as opposed to the initial master plan conceptual plan.
Okay, but the 19 dwellings, the two-story, that's always been from day one?
There was a plan, not presented to any board, to consider going with individual units, which was discussed with the planning department, but never presented for public hearing. So, this has been the plan that's been presented for public hearing, although there had been discussions about reducing the number of units and going to a single.
The answer is, there's no changes whatsoever in those condos.
She doesn't know who you are, you're just behind from the audience, so if you want to come up, you have to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Assalone, my address is 6 Veronica Court. It was only bantered around, there has been no change whatsoever in any condo layouts. The only change that was suggested was by Commissioner McGee, that there be a breakout, if necessary, for a fire truck, not an entrance. That's going to be up on the upper left-hand side. We have no objection to that whatsoever. We just wanted to make sure that we can landscape it. We've got a great concern for really good landscaping. My other question is that, you've mentioned storage. I did not eliminate storage per se. I may wish to pursue it at future date if the residents, this is not public storage, this would be if the residents feel they need storage, so I don't know if that gives you a problem or not. I want to say there'll never be any storage in.
There is currently no storage as part of this application.
No, absolutely not. We're going to try basements.
So, people here this evening would not give you the right to put storage in.
We agree to that completely.
Fair enough.
Again, no changes on the buildings whatsoever.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Timothy Behan, professional engineer with the firm Commonwealth Engineers Providence, Rhode Island. I'll walk you through the engineering of the project. We have a main entrance located here with a loop driveway configuration, the width of the pavement is 24 feet in width. There's 19 buildings, each building's a duplex unit. The property has been submitted to the freshwater wetlands for the stormwater review. We have received that permit in hand already. Basically, the stormwater runs in a south-westly direction through catch faces in the roadway network, discharges into a treatment system, which is a sediment four bay and sand filter system.
I'm sorry, which is what?
A sediment four bay and a sand filter system to treat the stormwater prior to discharging into the Duxell River. We also have a wetland complex, as Mr. Cronin mentioned, around the subject site, which will be open space. The subject property butts on a state roadway. This is regulated and permitted through the Department of Transportation for the curb opening. They also review the traffic numbers and location of the entrance. We have submitted that application back in March to DOT for permit. And basically, to summarize, the traffic at the site, this is an age-restricted community. The traffic peak volumes from the site are off-peak, so it does not coincide with the normal peak flow of Main Street. And the peak hour generation is 14 trips. DOT has a threshold of when they consider a project becoming an issue, they see further study, and they have a recommendation of 100 trips per hour, and this development only generates 14. So, we're well, well below their threshold in this submission to DOT. We should be getting that permit, I would say, in the next month or so. Other permits about, we have a sanitary sewer system connection to the town system. This is a low-pressure sewer system in which each unit has a so-called washing machine-type pump, which flows, the house sewage flows into the unit and is pumped out into the connection, which the town recently put in there several years ago, a two-inch connection for the horse mane. And that sewer application has been submitted to the Coventry Sewer Committee for review and approval. And the last permit we are filing for is the Kent County Water for the Pottery Water Service. We have a master meter located near the entrance at this location with a loop water system, and that water system has been submitted for Kent County review and approval as well. Other than that, for engineering, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So, you have your freshwater wetlands?
In hand.
And a ripdies, too?
Ripties, correct, yes.
So, those are the two that you have from them?
Correct.
Have you appeared before the Sewer Subcommittee yet?
No, the application has been filed with them.
Has been filed, okay.
We have been in front of the Sewer Subcommittee for the master plan submission and preliminary approval. We have received that.
So, you have not appeared before the council, sitting as the sewer authority, to give you your allotment of so many gallons per day?
That's the one we received.
Oh, you didn't?
Before, yes. Now, they're reviewing the actual design.
Okay.
The actual interconnection.
I wasn't aware that you had to do. Bob, they got to go back before the Sewer Subcommittee for the design? Okay. And have you made any submissions to Kent County, I'm sorry, at all?
Yes, that has been submitted.
All right. And I have no more questions at this time. Does anybody have any questions with Behan? Mr. Assalone?
The application for Kent County Water, will we have any hydrants within the property?
No, not within the property. The hydrant's situated right near the entrance here, and the pressure at the site with the hydrant flow test was 116 pounds, very good pressure in the area.
116.
116.
So, what's the distance between that hydrant and the furthest unit away, would you say?
We did a hose length around here, and it was, I believe, 500 feet.
Okay.
And they reviewed that to fire.
Okay.
Fire department.
My other question is, are any of these units within the 100-year floodplain?
No, none of the units are within the 100-year floodplain.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll open up the public comment. Do I have any questions that want to be answered at this time? None, okay. Thank you, Mr. Behan. This is a public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anybody here in the audience who would like to speak for or against this petition here this evening?
I'm sorry, sir.
Kyle Phillips, 1280 Main Street. I just have concerns about a buffer zone and privacy hedge, and I've already discussed it with John, and he's agreed to file an application with DEM. See, what I want is a buffer zone and a series of hedges between our property and their property. We're on the other side of the brook at 1280 Main Street.
You have a don't go on that. Right, it's one of those. It's the last one.
Yep, yep.
Right there.
Here is a letter that I have also given John.
Okay.
And we've also got some concerns with the house being burnt down over there. I guess they're not let the fire department practice and burn down Zarek's old house or something. So, our only concern is if it has lip paint and asbestos. But I, John says he's going through all that, so. So, I just want my piece of privacy like I've always had it. My great-grandfather originally bought that property back in the early 40s, and I've actually taken care of the property since 1977.
Mr. Assalone?
What I did agree to do, when he asked me about the buffer zone, this is my position. It's a nice idea, but that would require, that planting, and I agreed to it, if he gets the DEM permit.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So, if he gets a DEM permit, so, because I can't go in there. Nobody can go in there and do planting because it's too close. I did say that eventually I intend to go to DEM to fix the little bridge there, the thing sitting around the pond, things like that. So, if I get that far, I'll put that on my list. But basically, I cannot do anything in there without further permission from DEM.
Let me ask you a question. His house is right around here, son?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. How far is it, do you think, to the closest house, which is probably this one right here?
Probably a couple hundred yards.
Couple hundred yards?
Yeah, but, roughly.
600 feet?
Yeah, maybe. Not, maybe not.
Um, do you think, do you think you'll see those homes?
Oh, I can already see the whole property and the property across from that property, and I can see the properties across 117 from my property, from where I stand down at my beach and I walk down my dirt road. I can already see everything. So, I just want my piece of privacy back, that's all. I don't want huge trees or anything, I just want a series of hedges and buffer zone tree, you know, seven, eight-foot-high trees or something, or pine, even white pine trees, you know?
They grow fast.
Drive down Seven Mile Road and out on Situate Avenue, you'll see white pine tree hedges all over the place. I was out actually that way today. If you go on Seven Mile Road and go by that white rail place, you ever go by there, they got a nice pine tree hedge going right there. I don't see why DEM would have a problem with that, but I guess.
DEM is another.
Story. I know, because I built the house on the, and I had to go over the.
I have no problem doing the trees if he goes to DEM, he gets the permit. That's up to him. Want to be good neighbors, and then it's going to be well landscaped.
Okay, is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here this evening? Any other members of the audience who would like to speak for or against this petition here this evening? Seeing none at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Speak now, no one else? Okay. I have a motion to close. Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Question, Mr. Behan. Did you speak with Kevin McDee regarding his request?
Not personally, I did receive.
Has anyone spoken with Kevin? Come on down.
I spoke with Kevin on two occasions.
Yep.
He said it was a, he's concerned about a breakout area.
Yep.
He also thought about doing it one-way in and out, and I prefer not to do that because of the beautification of it, and we hope to be, and he said, well, he's fine with a breakout area.
Okay.
Not a problem for him.
That's all I wanted to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, one more thing. He had also requested an inclusion of an annual maintenance provision for the detention. Bob?
It's a condo association, it has to.
Okay. All right. Any other members of the commission have any questions? If not, I want to take a motion if somebody wants to put forward one.
I'll make a favorable recommendation, Mr. Chairman. I would make a recommendation, we approve this preliminary plan of revisaged condominiums. Proposed 19 single-story, two-unit condominiums on Assessas Flat 53, Lot 26, which is zoned PUD, located at 1320 Main Street. The project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed two-lot subdivision is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The housing element of the plan supports age-restricted development, which will allow elderly individuals to remain within the community. The housing element encourages the use of planned unit developments as a way to provide a variety of housing types, sizes, and costs. The project will not have a significant negative impact to the environment. The applicant has been approved in significant alterations permit and a ripdies permit from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. The project will be served by public water and public sewer. The proposed project meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. The proposed development is a planned unit development and thus adheres to all applicable zoning regulations. The development received a zone change from industrial I-1-2 planned unit development in September of 2016. The proposed project will not have a detrimental impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The development has permanent physical access to a public way. Project will need to be reviewed and approved by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation as part of the physical alterations permit process. This motion comes with the following stipulations. The applicant will need to secure approval from the Kent County Water Authority prior to final approval. The applicant will need to secure a physical alterations permit from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. The applicant will have to secure approval from the Coventry Sewer Subcommittee to connect the public sewers. And I would also like the final approval to proceed administratively.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
One question.
Sure.
Do we need to include as a stipulation the, what Mr. McDee is requesting, and also what the gentleman in the back had said, that Mr. Assalone reads it, that if he gets the permit, then Mr. Assalone will apply some program.
That's fine, I mean, it is, yeah. I mean, Mr. Assalone did state on the record that he would do those things. If you'd like to include that in the findings of facts, I don't, I mean, in your recommendation, I don't have a problem with that.
Would you like me to amend my motion to include those items? If you feel more comfortable. I would like to amend my motion to include the additional stipulation that, sorry, I don't have Mr. McGee's comment.
Mr. McGee's comments are on page 31 of the staff report.
I would like to add the following, the following two stipulations to my motion, that the, before I make this, I have a question.
Sure.
Was it to extend the 12-foot driveway by units 1 and 4 to Main Street and widen the roadways, or was it simply?
No.
No, it was simply to provide a second emergency egress for the safety and welfare of the proposed residents.
Correct.
I will add that. And also, that should the butter located at 1280 Main Street secure a permit from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management to allow for plantings along the buffer that the applicant will honor that.
Okay. Ms. McGee, she's going to modify her second.
Modify the second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, she carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you for the unanimous vote, appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on our agenda this evening, we have a public informational meeting of a master plan, the Lewis Farm Road Solar Project, Coventry Solar LOC, 52 Railroad Avenue. Is there anybody here representing the applicant this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm representing the applicant. My name is Scott Spear, S-P-E-A-R. I'm an attorney with Blisham-Cavanaugh, offices at 30, Exchange, Harris, and Providence. Bill Landry has been the attorney of record in this matter. Mr. Landry has a conflict this evening. I had the good pleasure of being with you the last time this matter was before the commission at a pre-application meeting. This matter has been before the commission twice on a pre-application status, and it was also a very robust and well-attended site plan, site walk. And this evening, we're here for master plan, and just to bring the board back into focus on this matter, this is a very moderate proposal for solar panels. It's 1 megawatt, which is extremely small and well buffered in relation to an extremely large piece of property, as you're familiar from the site walk. The master plan that we're seeking approval on this evening will be conditional. The applicant has to go back to the zoning board for a special use permit, which is required for this type of use. For the members of the public, not only do they have an opportunity to be here this evening for a public meeting, they will also have an opportunity to attend a public meeting on the special use permit. We have asked that the matter have some deferrals on some of the requirements. We've had conversations with the staff and the planning department. The deferrals that we would be requesting this evening that be postponed until the preliminary plan would be for a fiscal impact analysis, as well as Rhode Island DEM wetland determination. We still have that in progress. We've asked for a waiver of a landscape plan, given the peculiar type of usage it is in terms of a landscape plan. We will be presenting evidence through our engineer that we have made changes to the plan, which were recommended by the planning commission for buffering and landscaping issues, but we don't think a landscape plan will be required. We've also asked for a deferral on the approved soil erosion and sediment control plan until the preliminary plan stage as well. I have this evening with me four witnesses to testify. We have our professional engineer. I have an environmental scientist that will discuss issues dealing with the environment and the clearing of the area that will support the use. Also have a real estate expert that has done an analysis of the surrounding area, and he will have an opinion on the impact that this use will have on property values in the area. And the applicant as well, Mr. Clapp is here, who can talk about the entity that will be operating, constructing, maintaining the site, if you have any questions about maintenance and use and that sort of thing. Quick overview, it's a 133-acre site. It's an RR5 zone. It's a 1-megawatt facility. The total area within the fenced solar array area is only about four acres. The total land clearing, which has to be done to eliminate any shading, is about eight acres in total. About 6% of the entire parcel is being cleared. The horizontal footprint of the solar array is only about 1.2 acres. If we calculate it, it's only about 1% of the parcel is impacted. It's low-profile, 7 to 10 feet. There's no noise on the property line, locked gate, almost no traffic. There's going to be some occasional visits, and the engineers will get into that, as well as the owner can talk about these issues a little bit in greater detail. So, if there are any other questions on a preliminary matter, I'll entertain them now. Otherwise, I'd like to bring up Alan Bedavides as our engineer, and have him make a presentation. Are you good? Okay. Professor Bedavides. I don't know whether it is custom for this board to ask the engineers questions, to establish their ability to testify as an expert. I believe he's been here before, if you're willing to accept him as an expert.
We're not going to, we don't accept, we don't accept, it's not a zoning board, so we don't accept them as experts. If he wants to submit his application as part, you want to submit his resume as part of your presentation, that's fine, but we don't recognize him as experts.
Okay, well, let's get a copy of your resume, and we'll put it in the record. Do you have one?
Yeah, I do, once I finish the presentation.
Okay, that's fine. Just tell me. All right, go ahead.
Thank you again. I'm Alan Bedavides, I'm from Woodard and Curran. I'm a vice president with Woodard and Curran, own office in Providence, Rhode Island. The first plan that's up here right now is a locust plan. I won't spend a lot of time on this plan, but ultimately, what it does show is that it's a relatively small array, 1-megawatt array, compared to most of the ones that are being done, is a relatively small array in Rhode Island and elsewhere. And it takes up a very small portion of the parcel. Previously, you heard the testimony regarding the percentages, but ultimately, a very small percentage of this lot. If you could go back just the first slide, and I think it shows it a little bit better, you can see on that locust plan in the lower left, the black area is the area that's taken up the entirety of the project. The red area is the entirety of the 133-acre parcel, so a very small piece of what the overall parcel is. If you go on to the next one again, going against, spent too much time in this, we've updated both topography, property boundary, and wetlands. You'll hear an expert from Nathan coming up shortly regarding wetlands delineation, natural resources, and so forth. So, this site shows the, this site pretty well in terms of its surroundings. As you can see, relatively low population, so there are a few houses just to the north of the area, but generally a pretty low-density area. Again, the only thing I'll mention here, and Nathan, so she's may go back to it, the property boundary is shown in the portions of it that are relative to the scale. And the only thing I'll add here is there's a blue line is shown on this. What that is, is the 50-foot offset for the wetlands, that's probably most easily seen. You'll see the wetlands and the flags are to locate at 50-foot offset, and it's to the outside of that. So, no, it's not within the 100-year floodzone, and we have a river that's going on the eastern side of the property, again, which we'll be talking about later. So, that's existing issues. The next one, please. So, this is a blow-up to the proposed conditions. What we see here are the solar array, and. So, what these are, are the panels themselves, and each one of these squares are each a panel, so they're stacked too high. There's essentially a row here, there's a row here, there's a row here. So, that's what these horizontal lines are showing. So, this is the entirety of the array. There's an access road that's coming in off of the main road, coming into the site. Then, there's another gravel road that's coming down to the back part of the site with the turnaround. 1 megawatt, that's approximately 3,000 panels, as we talked about earlier, the panel area. So, just taking the actual size of the panels, represents 1.4 acres, so about 1% of the overall parcel. The panel area itself is approximately 3.7 acres, or 2.8% of the parcel. There's a fence that's going to be going around the entirety of the array, and that's, you know, required and typical for solar arrays, so that's right there. And that's a 4.8 acres. And ultimately, the final is the land clearing, and there's land clearing that you see here, and that's a total of 7.9 acres. The reason for the clearing is obviously to clear for the panels. The other thing is that panels can't be shaded. So, there's a shade zone that's created, and typically, the southern area, which is the direction the sun is coming from, is where you want to have this trees cleared. That's occurring here, and you can see the limited clarity in this direction. We did a site walk of the property, probably about a month and a half ago. One of the things that we have done is originally, there was an entrance, there's currently a gap in a wall that's out here that was created by the owner, and there's a roadway that's coming in, or a small pathway that's coming in, and we originally had this coming in like this. What we've done, based on feedback from the site walkers, we've gone back, redesigned it, and what we're doing is, for aesthetic reasons and others, bringing the entrance over to here, coming in like this, and then entering the site like this. There'll be some clearing and some gravel placed during construction in these areas, but once construction's completed, these areas will be vegetated. In addition, the area now where there's a roadway coming in, there'll be a screening that's going to be put in this area as well. One of the things, I think, that was evident during our site walk was a very strong existing buffer that's out there. I mean, you really can't even walk through the woods there, so it's a very dense landscaping. As mentioned earlier, the panels will be no higher than 10 feet, so relatively low height, something that, you know, you're not going to see, it's not a two-story home. We've got a minimum of 3 feet of undisturbed buffer from the abutting property, so that's our minimum that we've got. When we've laid this out, there's a summary here, which I'm sure no one can read, but it's certainly visible on your plans. This project meets all of the offsets and dimensional requirements of the town ordinances. There'll be no dimensional variance that's going to be required. We also work from outside the buffer zone, outside of the river. We also work from outside the buffer zone, outside of the, uh, the, uh, riverbank, so we don't envision as well, uh, any impacts to environmental conditions, uh, wetlands, et cetera. Again, you'll hear that information associated in a little bit. You know, the last thing I guess on the project that I'll point out is, you know, these are quiet. Um, at, at this point with this kind of screening, there will be no, uh, noise that'll be evident along the roadway or any of the offsite properties. Uh, in terms of environmental conditions, one of the things that often comes up is what kind of chemicals do they use to clean the panels? They don't use chemicals to clean the panels, they use water and typically it's just rainwater. So, they, unless there's some reason to go out, and I think they'll hear, you know, potentially testimony later, no chemicals or anything other than water is used to, uh, for the, for the cleaning of the panels. The traffic on this is, is really pretty minimal. Uh, probably on average every three to six months perhaps, there might be somebody coming out to the site, doing some minor maintenance. Um, the grass will need to be maintained, so that's something, there's a, uh, ultimately they don't want the grass to grow up and cover the panels, would impact the efficiency of the panels, so there'll be some cutting of the grass, they'll be going out there checking the site, but it's really a very, um, low intensity use in terms of traffic. You'll, you'll seldom see people going out to the site. No fertilizers, no pesticides, none of those things that would be used in terms of the grass or environmental impacts, so ultimately a very, um, you know, uh, good neighbor essentially. No emissions, no odors. Um, we've met, the team has met, I haven't met personally with the, uh, the fire chief. And, you know, what we've got is the ability for a, um, you know, essentially a pickup truck or ambulance or whatever, to be able to get around the site, um, around the perimeter of the site. We also have the ability for a fire truck or something large, or should be necessary, we don't expect it would be, to be able to come into the site and have a turnaround. So they, they, we've met with them and Alan Clapp, you know, if there's any question, can certainly go over it. Uh, we typically put Knox boxes as part of these. So, I think that's, that's the summary at this point. Obviously, the next steps when we get to that point, when we get to hopefully preliminary is where we'll do the detailed, um, stormwater design and grading. It's a pretty simple site. Uh, we're generally, you know, making very small changes, hopefully no changes in terms of the topography. Uh, drainage is pretty straightforward, so we really don't anticipate any challenges. I think with that, I will end and throw it back to the...
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Bedevides? No? Thank you. While he is getting his resume that we'd like to have marked as applicant's exhibit one, uh, I would like to introduce our next expert from Mason Associates. His name is Joe McHugh, M C, capital C U E. And he's going to address and provide an opinion that there are no adverse impacts from the application, uh, on wetlands or adverse impacts on wildlife, uh, from tree removal and that the R I D E M process that will be associated with these issues, um, will look like and what his expectations, uh, are in terms of our ability to succeed. And I do have a resume from, uh, Mr. McHugh, which I would like to have marked as applicant's exhibit two for the record, having his qualifications.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Joe McHugh, uh, from Mason Associates out of Citigroup, Rhode Island. So I've been contracted to do a few things out here. Um, I flagged the wetlands, just to go over that real quick. Uh, there's a swamp right here. Uh, there's a swamp, basically a corridor swamp heading down, uh, this section of the project area. And south of the project area is another swamp. Uh, there's a few car paths along here that bisects, uh, swamp currently. Uh, there is an intermittent stream in this swamp and that has been, uh, you know, hundred-foot riverbank wetland is applied under current, uh, D E M regulations. The swamp gets a fifty-foot, uh, jurisdictional setback, uh, that's called the fifty-foot perimeter wetland, and that's in the blue, uh, dashed area. Um, we will be, uh, assisting in, uh, preparing the wetland application for this property. Um, we, this project avoids, um, all setbacks and all, uh, R I M jurisdiction, but we will submit an application because the clearing is basically right at the edge of their jurisdiction limits. Uh, we will submit that as a preliminary determination application. Uh, I don't foresee a formal application or what's called a significant application, significant alteration application to this. Um, in that respect, that should be fairly straightforward. Um, I did also, I'll touch on some numbers first. Um, the limit of work, as was, um, stated, uh, that's about 9.3 acres, so that represents about seven percent of the hundred and thirty-three acre parcel. Uh, the actual amount of vegetation clearing is 7.89 acres. Uh, there are some paths that don't currently have vegetation right now, uh, so that's why that number's a little lower. Uh, and some other areas that are, um, devoid of vegetation, but that's about 7.89 acres and that represents about six percent of the hundred and thirty-three acre parcel. Something else I did out here was I was asked to, uh, assess the amount of trees that are greater than 50 years old. I did that just by visual observation. When you, if you walked out here, if you've seen this site, um, it's dominated by white pine, um, a lot of saplings and very young white pine. Um, so I, with the, the amount of, uh, paths out there, I did not GPS locate the polygons, but I did do my best estimate as to the amount of, uh, trees that are greater than 50 years old. Um, I believe that number to be about 6.69 acres, uh, within that limit of, uh, vegetation clearing. Uh, that represents about 8.5 percent. Uh, so very low, as Alan mentioned, it's a small area, uh, relative to these, um, other factors as well. Uh, with that clearing, there will be a change. Obviously, you take out a little bit of forest, uh, you're going to change that habitat type. Some of that's going to be the panel array, but outside of that will be, uh, meadow. Uh, that can be very beneficial to other species of wildlife. Uh, it also creates an edge habitat, uh, which is a, a factor of, of wildlife that, you need edge habitat, you want that diversity, uh, on sites. Um, so I think, it's my opinion that, you know, cutting the amount of trees here, they're young trees, uh, it's for the most part monotopic stand of white pine. Um, I, I don't see that there would be an adverse impact to, to birdlife using this. Uh, mammals certainly not, they'll have plenty of room to go around. What will be displaced, if any species are nesting here, um, there's a lot of room within that hundred and thirty-three acre parcel that, uh, I feel they'll, they'll find their, their new home. There is a natural, uh, heritage area polygon to the west, uh, just off-site. Uh, that is a butterfly species, uh, the correspondence with D E M, uh, told me that that's called the frosted elfin. Uh, it's a, it's a butterfly, uh, but the documentation has been a thousand feet off-site to the west. Currently, there's no habitat, uh, for that species, uh, in, in the project area. They prefer open grassland, open areas, uh, wildflowers, uh, certainly you're not going to find that here now. And with that, I think I've pretty much said, um, what I need to say and I'll open it to questions.
Anyone have any questions for Joe? Thank you. Mr. Spear, could I, um, ask Alan a couple of questions before we proceed to the next witness? Mr. McHugh brought up a couple of things, I, I, it was negligent, I didn't ask you about this.
Sure.
He talked about meadows beyond the fence. Could you explain to the board, um, inside the fence, what you're going to have underneath the panels? What, what's it going to be?
Yeah, so it'll be, uh, vegetated, essentially it's a, a low-growing, um, slow slash low-growing grass mix. Um, the, what they like to do is have something that doesn't go tall, again, because it'll, it'll oversee the panel, so it'll be a grass mix and, and vegetated.
Okay, and as far as stormwater management, I know you haven't gotten any stormwater design at all, but have you thought about it at all? What's your, any preliminary thoughts?
It's a, you know, ultimately, we probably some sort of detention because we've got, you know, trees and we're going to grass, so we've got, you know, change in curb number. Um, don't see the pretty significant, you know, increase. Uh, you've got a pretty small site, so some sort of detention feature. Our goals on these is to really not change grading, not change, uh, not change runoff conditions unless we absolutely have to. Typically, we can accommodate a 10 to 12 percent slope and still get the panels to work.
Okay.
So, uh, pretty straightforward, we'll just capture it, run it through some sort of detention feature and make sure we match pre-op post and look at the water quality conditions and stormwater guidelines.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, the next witness is Jamie Miles from Scotty Associates. Mr. Miles is a real estate expert, he's reviewed the project and visited the surrounding land areas, is going to offer his opinion based upon his research, what type of impact that this proposal will have on the surrounding properties. And you have your resume with you as well?
I gave it to you.
You gave it to me?
Sorry.
Well, I'm going to let him start his testimony, I'll shuffle through my papers and find it when he gets out. Thank you.
How do you do? My name is James Plots, David Miles, I've been a real estate appraiser in Providence, uh, in Rhode Island for about thirty-seven years. I've appraised all kinds of real estate all over the state, uh, and up and down, you know, southeastern Mass, Connecticut, in the story of New Jersey. I've visited this particular site, uh, inspected the interior, um, and researched various aspects of the physical property and, uh, visited the neighborhood in general. Um, I'm going to read my notes, you'll forgive me, I'll forget all this. Uh, in general, from the plan, uh, the submitted material, I estimate there's roughly a hundred and eighteen flat lots within about two thousand feet. Uh, I would classify twenty, twenty of those properties comprising a total of 206 acres roughly, as a butter's approximate to, to the, to the entire piece, uh, the entire hundred and thirty acres. This piece of property is up in the northeast corner, I mean, the northwest corner. Most of the property is in the southeast, uh, so, and, and extends all the way to green. Um, so, um, you know, there are dwellings and improvements further away on Lewis Farm Road, Black River Road and New Green, but that's about a half a mile, you know, in a straight line. Uh, so, I doubt this thing isn't going to affect those properties, I don't think at all. Uh, twenty abutting properties, I estimate twelve total, maybe three acres, actually a butt, the, actually a butt, the larger, the, the main piece, including, uh, the ten-acre treasure trail itself and the twenty-one acre, um, Bucks Brook property owned by D E M up there in the, on the northeast corner. Of the, um, of the, of the abutting twelve, seven are in green. Okay, so the actual farm property's actually abutting, the main piece, seven of them are in green. Uh, another eight lots comprising eighty acres in the northwest, uh, Lewis Farm Road. Uh, they are mostly single family, uh, as are two or three more across Flat River Road up there in that right-hand thing up there. Again, the, the, the Bucks, Bucks, uh, Bucks Creek, uh, property in the state, uh, is going to shield, you know, all of that stuff from this, from this piece of property. It's about seventeen hundred feet roughly from the west corner, southwest corner of, um, east corner of the, I mean, the valid area up to the, the lots on, uh, Black River Road opposite the front. Let's see, they, project, uh, the property's actually abutting, the project area are three, as far as I can tell. Uh, excluding the remaining portions of the parent property, the parts that, that, that the owner intends to keep, uh, which is, uh, what are the differences? Uh, substantial acres, uh, these lots, uh, comprise thirty-three acres and one of them is the Buckhorn Brook's parcel, so it actually is the Bucks, Bucks, uh, Bucks Horn Brook parcel, which I think is owned, which is owned by D E M, again, up there in the northeast corner. Uh, so there are really two, maybe three, depending on how far they actually extend to the south of, 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 of actually abutting the property. And neither of the two lots that I found was abutters on the west end, both are on Lewis Farm Road, either of the lots eighty, nine, ninety, a large enough, uh, for further subdivision, push to the, um, R R five zoning, five acre zoning definition. The parent site, as I said, a hundred, is a hundred and thirty acres. The project area itself is roughly eight acres, covered by a lease described by Mr. Bedevides, uh, 1.2, 1.3 acre field array, uh, seven acres within, seven point, uh, seven to eight acres within the fence. Uh, upon completion, the interior of the project will be, uh, cleared, graded for the solar array. Areas northwest are part of deep enough Bucks Horn Brook and areas south of the treasure trail, east to green or vacant heavily wooded and retained property of the ownership. All this stuff, this way, this way, is retained by the ownership. Uh, setback from the nearest abutters, uh, on Lewis Farm Road, I estimate to be about eighty-five feet. Uh, buried existing used vegetation will be maintained, screened and developed portion for view. Resumed with the screened area of the western abutting site will be at least thirty feet. Uh, that's the existing berry dense, as you have seen, uh, the, the chase is very thick. Uh, the interest in designing, candidate to an angle of the street. It's fenced, uh, the one megawatt fields comprised of roughly three thousand panels on fixed cantilever metal racks, uh, seismic bracing, uh, the field array is well, is well away from the street and also well upgraded. It's going to be up, tree fenced and essentially pushed back visually from the street. The, uh, some, part, part of the plans included in operation, maybe servicing plan, uh, you've probably seen specifying array maintenance, asbestos, mowing, uh, as required, not often, uh, once or twice a year with, um, mowing and mowing, probably take, probably a little more, more frequently than that. Uh, heavy equipment generators are rarely required. Uh, every five to 10 years, it may require a move truck to remove, uh, some of the panels and replace it. Uh, periodic safety services tip apparently number two, more licensed personnel and a pickup truck, uh, to gate security. Uh, as, as designed, I just, I see the facility is a gate fence secured and very well screened from nearby property. It is, uh, it is my understanding that these facilities generate, uh, no or version of noise, glare, heat, traffic, uh, of much as poos, dust or particles. Down coverings and containments, uh, are reported and durable. Uh, perspective facility design, uh, and development, generate, degeneration facilities and equipment per se generating operations, facility maintenance and operations. Security and safety measures appear to me to be, uh, reasonable, code conforming, ultimately code conforming, uh, industry and industry standard and adequate. Um, I have not in the course of my experience as an appraiser, uh, observed such insulation learning well to adversely affect, to mark, by, to join the nearby property. Uh, my research and the assignment included consulting of my, of my own files, experience and judgment, discussions with knowledgeable real estate appraisers, area municipal plans, solar developers, research and literature, including all other facilities in the appraisal institute. Uh, I found no compelling or conclusive data-driven results indicating appreciable or detectable adverse effects this particular project or small-scale, total of tech facilities generally without speaking of any specific other facility. Uh, but I, I see no conclusive data-driven results, uh, that this project would be adversely affect, uh, near adjoining or nearby market values. I conclude the impact of subject development and Hilton operating this submitted and discussed will have no or negligible adverse effect on market value of the jointed property. I've looked at a lot of, I've talked to some planners in Western, West, West Port Mass, Dartmouth, Mass, uh, Cranston, Rhode Island. Uh, they've all had several hearings, among a bunch of them, several hearings on the matter. No, what they report to me, no, uh, opponents of these have ever presented an actual study data-driven, uh, evidence, uh, indicating an adverse effect on, on that. And larger arrays, much larger arrays of a hundred, three hundred, you know, as big as nine hundred acres elsewhere in the country, uh, do need, do have... in the country, do meet, do have some, people have problems with those. But that's a very different kettle of fish. That's really the sum of observations.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Cooney?
Mr. Miles, just picking up on that last portion of the market data, the data sources that you were able to obtain and speaking with plenty of resources, did you ever, or as part of this analysis that you did for this particular project, did you look at any similar sized solar projects, maybe in residential areas, rural areas like West Greenwich, and do any type of a pair sales analysis? For example, a house might have sold for, or budding one of these in one town, and then, you know, 10 miles away, and...
I looked into some, I researched the Pet Hill Road project in Johnston early recently, and frankly, there's not enough data to make such a judgment in that particular case. I found one instance of a property in Mansfield that was built after the construction of a 20-acre solar array, and the price of that case conforms with pre-existing, you know, values in the area prior to the construction. So there, you know, the short answer is no, but I tried. And the date on this is limited, a really good authoritative study is actually fairly complex. If you, if you just take a sale and just pair it, you're not actually certain whether it was because of factor X. It could be just that deal sold for that price.
I think your example in Mansfield would probably be, can I just ask, it's the demographics in that, not being totally familiar with Mansfield, was similarly to the western end of Coventry, where it's rural five acre zoning, or is it more of a built-up?
This part of, the part of Mansfield from aerial photography that I saw is, Mansfield is a more populated town, suburban Boston, as you know. I think green is rather more rural than Mansfield even generally. And this area is more built up, or this happens, with this example, I won't call it a direct comparison, but an example.
And, and there was no research?
It's not, it's moderate suburban, you know.
And there was nothing in the, for example, we toured the Leighton Street farm, which is very rural, similar characteristics to this?
Right.
And there were homes abutting the site, but, you know, I'm not aware of whether any of them are sold, whether the values are going up, down, or indifferent. And it is difficult because there's other trends in the market that affect value.
Right.
But you couldn't find anything in a similar area?
No, and the people who have the most interest in it don't, in finding adverse effects, to my observation, don't actually come up with, you know, evidence supporting the claim. People are nervous about it, and people are concerned about it. But I think that, and it's not to say that an individual buyer won't, a particular buyer won't walk away. The question is, how does it affect all buyers generally?
Correct.
Some buyer may say, I don't like the solar array, I don't like the kitchen. It's not enough bedrooms, it's not enough school. There are a lot of reasons why people, and to sort out, there's no evidence that can sort out, that has, that I've seen them sort it out.
That there's a...
A specific...
Right. That property values adversely affected by anybody's solar...
There's evidence for effects relative to power, you know, fossil fuel generating plants, some evidence relative to high tension power alignments, you know, other things, they, there's evidence for it, but so far, I don't find...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Smalls. This time, I'd like to hand to the staff Mr. Miles' resume, marked as applicant's exhibit two. The last two witnesses I have this evening, if you have any questions for them, are Alan Clapp, who is the applicant of Comfort Solar, and he is available to answer any questions you may have. We also have with us Skip Provost, who is with the parent organization, operates on a large scale, doing this type of work, and both of them are able to answer any questions about the success rates of these types of projects, their experiences in other communities, their track record, and how they handle projects. If anyone has any questions.
One thing, bear with me, I'm sorry. As part of the package, we received something from National Grid, here it is. Could someone, I don't know, I don't care if it's Alan or you, talk about this exhibit H, the interconnection service agreement that was given to us?
My name is Alan Clapp, I'm the development manager with Nexant.
I'm sorry, did I break you to the next one? Alan, yes, Alan Clapp?
Alan Clapp, C-L-A-P-P, the development manager with Nexant.
Thank you.
So I believe exhibit H is, is that the interconnection service agreement?
It is.
Correct. So we filed an application for interconnection with National Grid. It's essentially a three-step process, and what you see before you is a third step where they have conducted an impact study on our behalf of our project being proposed to them. They then told us the improvements that are required for that interconnection and the cost of those improvements, and we have an executed version of that agreement. So essentially, National Grid and Nexant have this going forward with a timeline to do those improvements, if in fact we do receive approval.
So the nuts and bolts of this is, you have an agreement with N Grid to build this, so they'll take your electricity, you're correct?
That's, this is part of, it's a two-part process for the electricity to be sold.
Okay.
The other part is that we had bid into the Rhode Island Renewable Energy Program.
Yep.
And we were successfully accepted last November, December, and we had submitted that with our package as well. So that is the revenue side of this application, and so that is what we need to go forward with National Grid and renewable energy.
I just, I just wanted you to give the board a comfortable as to how confident you are that you're going to proceed with this if it were to get approved, that you have permission from the appropriate entities?
You do.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless there are any other questions, the applicant has completed its presentation. We would like to reserve an opportunity to respond to any questions when you open up to a public hearing, and then when we're finished with the public hearing, wrap it up.
Actually, I, I should be addressing Mr. Clapp the question. You mentioned just now in your overview that the grid wants some improvements. Do the improvements impact anything that we're looking at, planes or anything else?
No, the improvements are in the poles of the street going from this project to two or three phases at the end of Lewis Farm Road, essentially the single phase electricity out there today, and we need to upgrade those poles and those wires if in fact we do connect.
So that's all offsite?
It is offsite.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have any questions, Tom?
Yeah. Okay, you've got 1 megawatt installation, how many homes does that want to serve?
100 roughly.
Okay. And at the end of its life cycle, do you have a decommissioning plan in place or working on one?
Alan, would you like to address that issue and how you deal with the maintenance and the life expectancies and...
Sure. There are two parts of the decommissioning. First and foremost, we have a contract with the landowner to remove all equipment from this property at the end of this lease that we have with them. So that's our contractual obligation, ours or any assigns that we have that stays with the project. And secondly, we would expect to be proposing a plan to you on decommissioning surety and so forth for the removal of equipment, if in fact it's a surety against us not performing essentially. It's a secondary insurance for that. And we haven't made that presentation to you yet at this stage, but we intend to within this, going through this stage.
So anybody else have any questions from...